Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to Grand Blank Township Board of Trustees meeting for Tuesday, March 22nd. Could all rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The absence of our clerk, I will call the roll. Dr. Reridan.
Here.
Ms. Hugo.
Here.
Mr. White. Mr. Feike.
Here.
Clerk Robertson. Treasurer Kilmer.
Here.
And myself. Okay, at this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda. I would like to amend the agenda, though, slightly, to insert a closed session right after the approval of the consent agenda. So if we can make that six, and we'll make old business six A, I guess.
So moved.
Okay.
Support.
Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I guess we need to have a roll call vote on that, from what my clerk tells me. So we will go to, let's see here, Feike.
Yes.
White, say absent. Ms. Hugo.
Yes.
Dr. Reridan.
Yes.
Clerk or Treasurer Kilmer.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay, at this time, we will go to public comments. And is there anybody here that would like to make public comment? Okay, seeing no further public comment, we'll close the public comment, bring it back here to the board, and I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
By Dr. Reridan, support by Mr. Feike.
Yes.
Treasurer Kilmer.
Yes.
Trustee Feike.
Yes.
Trustee Reridan.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay, we did receive a Chinese written opinion, where did that is? And at this time, I would like to entertain a motion to go into executive session. And it would be to pursuant to MCL 15 dot 268 H, to discuss a confidential written legal opinion from attorneys regarding the 911 consortium. Okay, motion by Ms. Hugo, support by trustee Feike. So again, that's to move into a closed session pursuant to MCL 15, I5 dot 268 H, to discuss confidential written legal opinion from the township attorney regarding the 911 consortium. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
You'll need a roll call for that.
Do we? Okay. All right, let's see here. Trustee Hugo.
Yes.
Trustee Feike.
Yes.
Dr. Reridan.
Yes.
Treasurer Kilmer.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay, we will, actually, Mr. Limina, we're going into conference room.
Conference room B.
Okay. So we asked the public to hold tight, and, okay, we're back to our regular session. It's 7:58, and I'll entertain a motion to reopen the meeting.
Make a motion.
Hugo, support by Dr. Reridan. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Going back to old business, well, let's take care of first, we've got a motion, I think.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the township's attorney's recommendation regarding the 911 consortium.
Okay, support by Dr. Reridan. We'll do a roll call vote. See, trustee Feike.
Yes.
Dr. Reridan.
Yes.
Trustee Hugo.
Yes.
Treasurer Kilmer.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay. Next on the agenda under old business is our item A, strategic plan branding for Grand Blank Township. And we have Ms. Roberts here, our executive coordinator, who's been working on branding.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We are finally ready to get this sign ordered.
Is that microphone on, Melissa?
Yeah, I think so. I just wasn't speaking into it, sorry.
It's good. Somebody's asking me if it was on.
Okay. So tonight, what we have to talk about with the branding committee is signage. Our township sign that's going to go in front of our building has, we have that on the agenda tonight to be ordered. The branding committee has worked together to come up with a sign. We have, we had four different companies bid on the sign, and we picked the one that we felt was the most fitting for our township and the most timeless for our township. So we could have it for a long period of time.
Any thoughts on the signage? Is that still the sign?
We're talking about the, for the front of the building.
Oh, oh, oh.
So it's a, it's different.
It'll be before you on item 7D. If you guys decide to move it forward.
And then also, as far as these signs go, Action Traffic has offered, I know I mentioned that they might be offering to donate, and they have offered to donate those signs. So those will be at no cost to the township, which is wonderful. Yeah, we're still working out a little bit of the detail on the signage and talking, we're working with the road commission, so.
Forwarded the photos that you had so far to date to the road commission. We've taken pictures of examples of signs that aren't the green and white that they're requesting. There are several examples all over the state of Michigan. So I understand that it's part of the, like, a sign traffic code or something, as informational signs have to be green and white. But clearly, it's not as important as you'd think, since ours have been up since 1985, and they were white with black lettering. And you, there's so many other examples. We sent those pictures along to Fred Pavandi from the road commission this morning.
Mr. Kilmer.
So would it be appropriate for the sign that goes in front of the building to put out a motion for that?
And when we get to item D, we'll do that under new business. Thank you.
I just want to thank, you know, Melissa, I think, you know, your committee has done a great job.
Thank you. Thank you.
I mean, coming up with a logo that everybody agrees on, and, you know, it's timeless, too. I mean, eventually, it will get to an end of its life, but I think it's got some staying power, and it looks up to date and modern. And I think it's going to look great on the monument sign. And I think, you know, our signs that will go at each intersection, what have you, we also, I know Ms. Roberts has been working on some other smaller type monument signs for some of the significant entry areas that we'll probably see eventually here, too.
Yep.
So I think it's going to look real nice.
Yeah, we're making good progress.
We've been debating on the sign out front for the last eight years, I think, to do something on that thing, and just have never pulled the trigger. We've looked at digital signs, we've looked at everything under the sun, but I think this monument sign makes the most sense. The digital sign, I don't know, I think this looks classy, and it'll serve us well.
I agree.
And it won't be as costly as a digital sign either, so.
You could advertise the hamburger specials.
Exactly. All right, well, thank you very much, Ms. Roberts. Okay, item B, under our strategic plan for old business, is our tech village and DDA growth. Mr. Limina.
So primarily, what we wanted to update the board on with that, and there is a sheet, mine's highlighted, yours won't be, but of the grid, with some up-to-date information on it. There was a meeting on Friday that Assistant DPW Director Boggs attended, kind of a pre-construction meeting for Baldwin Road and where that's going to go. So we're close. We've also had a meeting with Attorney Laddie, Supervisor Bennett, myself, Director Sostak, with bond counsel, to talk about what the bonding looks like to move forward with the Baldwin Road upgrade. It looks to be, depending on whether Senator Johnson appropriation goes through in Lansing, we're looking for an additional $500,000. That would bring the DDA's costs down to $2.1 million. In our conversations with bond counsel, we talked about different ways that they could go about doing that, with a capital improvement bond, a DDA TIF bond. And it was really decided that we wanted this to be a DDA project, it's probably going to be that DDA bond. That means that you guys will still have to approve it as a board, the DDA can't go out on their own. But we're looking for, you know, approximately $2.1 million on a 10-year payback for that road project. We have to supply a couple more items to bond counsel so they can look at it, with the idea that that bond, we would go out and sell those bonds in June. That would be when the construction is projected to start with, it's called Phase Two. The first phase, road commission is doing, it's 900 feet directly west of South Holly. And then Phase Two is the DDA project, where it'll take up from that 900 feet and go to the new Dort extension. So that part will get done, and that's the part we're going to have to bond for. The $1.7 million that we're going to get through the TEDF funds, that will be in Phase Three, will cover that portion of the project. And that is from Ganey Drive to Ruby Street on the east side of Baldwin. So it's getting phased in, they'll go out for bids soon, correct?
Yeah, so Phase One, Phase One construction starts by April, yeah, April.
Come on up to the podium if you want. Great.
So Phase One will start, construction start May, April to May, and then the Phase Two Dennis was talking about, June to September 2nd, and they want Phase Three to go from September to November 15th. So they're rolling on this, and we've got a pre-con for Phase One this Friday. And Zito has that job, and they will be commencing on that as soon as possible, so.
Part of the challenge with that is, you know, the wetlands along there. And I don't know if everybody recalls, but that section closest to Genesis, one of the problems is that that road has been continually sinking. And so now that we're looking at making it all season and a little bit wider, now we're going to take care of that issue of it sinking that the county's had for decades, right? And so that's adding to the cost, but.
There's a shift over there.
What's that? I'm sorry?
I think there's a slight shift in the road there.
But it was a big part of the engineering. Our engineering costs went up because knowing that, that when they did the borings and saw, I think it was 22 inches of asphalt in that area, because the road commission has continually applied another layer on as the road continues to sink down. That will be addressed during this construction project.
Okay.
David, was there anything I was leaving out on the bonding?
No, I think you got it. I think you got it. Again, we just have to provide financial information to them. I need to give them some administrative administration on the DDA and TIF side. And then they were relatively ready to move forward quickly.
Yeah. Well, I just want to add that, you know, the DDA is being very aggressive on this project in terms of trying to get everything into it that we can. You know, we're limited by basically our budget, and that, you know, we've got to be able to repay this bond, too. But our hope was to do some real nice lighting. We had other requests to pave shoulders and, you know, put pathway through there. Our plan is eventually to put a pathway through there, but we can't afford even an extra $100,000 on top of this thing. And, you know, it may seem like a minor expense to add on, but when we're at the end of our budget with trying to pay this thing back, we can't just add another $100,000 to it. David?
I was surprised by that. I thought that we would have a little more latitude, be able to borrow more money. But they weren't fairly clear about really just, we were committing what our current tax recovery is for the next 10 years. I mean, it was, there's not, we didn't, we can't lever that money.
Right.
It's just like, pay it back in 10 years, that's all you can borrow. And I was a little surprised by that. I thought we'd be able to put in some more projects.
Yeah.
I mean, we could, if we did that capital improvement bond, or the township took the bond, not a DDA TIF bond, which means you guys are going to guarantee that we're going to pay it back. And with the capital improvement bond, you could put all kinds of things in there if you wanted to. My words of caution on that are, we want the DDA, I don't want to dampen their enthusiasm, but I also want them to live within their means and understand that as Fessler Bowman comes up, depending on, we'll get, we'll pick up some taxable value from them for next year. Whatever is existing on December 31st of 2022 will start to get picked up in the summer taxes apportion, and then the winter taxes will go out. But really, functionally, it's a 2024, whatever they build this year will really capture in 2024, and what, you know, is finalized, you know, in 2023 will capture in 2025. So is that little bit of a lag time and understanding that? We anticipate that they're going to have, I mean, they're a very well-funded DDA compared to most who get started, and there will be additional funds coming in as the Enterprise Park builds out. But it's just, you know, that two, up to two-year lag time behind, we got to make sure they can afford the payments in the meantime before additional funds come up.
I think that's really smart, because it was never intended that this board would ever supplement that.
Correct.
And I think it's good to stick with that, that theory.
So, I mean, like I said, people see that it's a huge project, and they figured, well, we can just add another $100,000 here or there, and it's, unfortunately, we can't afford to do that, so. Okay.
The only other thing that I would add, Scott, that was in here, was we're going to work, and you guys will see it, I've got GIS working on the boundary map to expand the industrial development district. You know, we did it, in fact, Dr. Reridan, we probably did it during the board that you were on when I first got here. We expanded it to the east side of South Holly, because it was only on the west. Now, we're going to do the same thing and expand that industrial development district to encompass that Grand Blank Enterprise Park. What that does is it enables those businesses, then, to apply for that PA 198 tax abatement. So it's probably something you'll see within the next, you know, month or two months, where we'll change that boundary and put that in. The zoning is already in place, it's light industrial, we just need to go through the resolution process of establishing it as an expansion of the industrial development district.
Okay. So is everything rolling right along, Mr. Limina, on the Fessler Bowman and the industrial park?
Yeah, I think we're in good shape. We're already doing the engineering on the water and sewer to get into that property. We've got, Row is as far down the road, we have changed the direction we were going to go in. With the sewer going out to Cook, we're going to bring it out through Warwick Woods, actually, instead. Working on some easements and some issues there, but we, that's full steam ahead, we're, we don't see any issues slowing us down, that should be quick. They already got their engineering for putting the road in. So we're clipping along, it, all, you know, full steam ahead.
I see construction equipment out at formerly the Trim Pines Farm. I see the trees being cut along Baldwin Road for the widening, so I think it's going to be a busy year out off Baldwin Road. There's a couple other businesses doing some work on their property as well, so it's going to be an active area, so.
And one of the things, well, we're going to have Baldwin Road designed as Class A that's going to come all the way up past the tree farm property now. But we still need to work on that next segment eventually, that will take us all the way down to Saginaw. And in a conversation with, during the DDA meeting last week with King Steel, and they're putting in that railroad siding, transloading facility, and one of the things that's important to them is with the steel, with being able to go out down Saginaw to moving over and, you know, if they're heading south out of there, rather than go up to Holly Road, or to go to the Dort Highway, he'd asked about what the timeframe might be on moving that forward. What we want to do is be smart about it, and whatever new jobs are coming into the Enterprise Park, or into that, anywhere in that DDA area, we can capture those as part of an incentive for somebody to purchase the property and locate there. And then, just like we did with the TEDF funds, we got the $1.7 million. We want to see if we can't, you know, combine that, get additional federal funds, so we can complete that project all the way to Saginaw. But we might as well do it with federal dollars versus trying to do it with all local or, you know, county dollars.
So, very good. And I think they even have gone back to the drawing board on their railroad siding to make, to expand it even further because of the interest in it, so. And that'll be awesome. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Limina. Next, under new business, the board will consider Resolution 22 dash 2 to adopt the Genesee County Hazard Mitigation Plan. Mr. Limina?
So this came before you from the Metropolitan Planning Commission. Again, it's in coordination with Genesee County Sheriff's Emergency Management, Homeland Security Division. It's, they have completed the update to their Genesee County Hazard Mitigation Plan. Now it requires us and the other local municipalities to adopt a resolution in support of the plan. And they provided the resolution, or David's gone through the resolution, and I think it's just a matter of, we've always, you know, supported and participated with the Genesee County Hazard Mitigation Plan. I can't see any reason why we wouldn't continue that support.
Okay. Any input from our chief or police chief?
I would only add that the plan was updated due to update in FEMA, their guidelines, so it is in compliance with FEMA guidelines. And heaven forbid, in the event we do have a incident here in the township, a severe incident, we would be eligible for funding with the adoption of this plan, so.
Thank you. All right, somebody care to make a motion?
Make a motion.
Okay. Okay, Dr. Reridan.
Yes.
Treasurer Kilmer.
Yes.
Let's see, Hugo?
Yes.
Mr. Feike?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay, item B. The board will discuss potential projects to be funded through the ARPA funds, A R P A funds received by the township.
So, again, we, as the boards are aware, we have been awarded $3.8 million initially from those American Recovery Plan Act funds, because they decided, basically, think of it like the standard deduction, up to $10 million, so you don't have to go through their calculations to show lost general fund revenue that's COVID-related. You can take that basic standard deduction up to $10 million, we got $3.8 million, we can use it for appropriate expenditures for, you know, government services. What that means is that, you know, initially, we said water, sewer, we were, you know, broadband, but now we can expand that to any eligible, normal governmental expense. Obviously, it should be, in my opinion, focused towards the general fund. One of the things that we need to be aware of is when, the impact, biggest impact for us probably from COVID shutdowns was with Parks and Recreation. And because they generate 70% of their own revenue through programming, locking down the programming like we had to do during the pandemic really hurt Parks and Recreation's ability to raise funds. What that meant is the township had to subsidize Parks and Recreation with general fund dollars to keep them moving. So they still had other expenses, they still tried to be as creative as possible, but it did impact the general fund. So now we have an opportunity to spend this money on some general fund expenditures, and we've, we're kind of putting together a list of some things that really need to happen. Also COVID-related, Fire Station Number Two on Baldwin. One of the things during COVID is we found out, if you recall, when we separated from the city of the, you know, with the joint fire department, and we brought them onboard here, we thought, well, it'll only be for two years, because we have to build a new fire station, and we can convert this, we'll make sleeping quarters, and it'll be a little tight, but it's only for a couple of years, and we'll be okay. Well, that was three years ago, and we haven't started building the building yet. COVID hit, and we couldn't even keep our firefighters separated enough to keep them safe. So we started staffing down at Fire Station Number Two. Good things came out of that. We found out that you can shave about a minute off of response times on the south end by having a staffed Station Number Two, which is great. But we also had to have that safety separation for our firefighters. So really, it's a safety factor as well. Now that we're, we worked out of there, we realized that we need to upgrade that Station Number Two. And we really need to upgrade it for a couple of reasons. Not just the safety, like I talked about from COVID, not because it actually improves our response times on the south end, but also because where our big build-out's going to come from, through that DDA section and our new commercial corridor, is we, that fire station's become more important. It does make sense for us to have two of them staffed. So eventually, it's going to be staffed 24/7. So now we have the opportunity to really upgrade that station, bring it back up. It was built in 19...
96.
So it's, it's, it's in a serious need of a makeover. We initially went in there at about $450,000. It looks like it's probably going to come in closer to $700,000, supply chain issues, cost of supplies, whatever. But I really think that the board should highly consider that as one of the ARPA fund expenditures. We got $3.8 million, it's going to come out of the general fund, or we can take it out of the ARPA funds, which seems to make sense to me, because it is a COVID response, and it really helps us get prepared to meet the next 20 or 30 years build-out for the township. The other thing is with the Parks and Recreation pole barn upgrades, we've had employees out there working. They've had no, during the winter months, no warm office space, no break room, no warm bathroom facilities. We're in the process of upgrading that pole barn now, it looks like it's coming in at around $90,000, give or take. Bringing those updates in, creating a true break space and office space, we're heating the pole barns so that they can actually do their winter maintenance on equipment with some heat in there. Getting that whole thing done for about $90,000, thank you to the DPW guys as well, who have assisted throughout this project. Director Linehan has done a great job of holding those costs down and really preparing this thing, but it's a really wise choice of ARPA funds. Again, COVID-related in the fact that Parks and Recreation lost funding due to the pandemic, and here's an opportunity for us to give general fund dollars back to that. HVAC in the township hall. This building was, it's a great armory building disguised as a township office complex. One of the issues we have is our HVAC system is antiquated. If you ask Mr. Boggs, he'll tell you, he's had the repair guys on the roof above my office, I don't know, five or six times in the last four or five weeks. I don't have heat in my office. Melissa Roberts, executive coordinator, and I are tough. We have, you know, we have some small space heaters to keep us warm when our water starts to freeze. But we think it would be a wise expenditure of, of a one-time shot from the federal government to allow us to have heat in our section of the building. So I'm making a plea that we, and I don't have a dollar amount for that yet, Mr. Boggs is working on it, but really, it's not just for ours, it's not just one unit. HVAC is an issue in this whole building, and it's time to upgrade. We have a one-time shot in the arm from the federal government. This will not impact, you know, general fund later down the road. We've already been planning and capital funding that it's going to, we're going to have to set aside $250,000 a year for like three years to get this thing funded. I strongly encourage you guys to agree that this would be a wise expenditure of ARPA funds. And finally, there's some other Parks and Rec things out there, whether it be the South Pavilion, pathway lighting, that I think are very important. What you can't spend this money on is anything to do with unfunded liabilities, pension or healthcare-related wise.
Well, spring is almost here, so it's going to warm up.
And as far as I know, the air conditioning still works.
It does, because it's cold in here.
Dr. Reridan?
How much, how much would?
How much, how much would, do you anticipate being left? I mean...
Out of all, if we did all of this?
That's, right.
We're probably talking, we're probably in the $2 million range, so you still have about $1.8 million remaining that you have to have a plan to spend no later than December 31st of 2024.
If you're looking at COVID, you know, related things, that the Parks and Rec really did, I mean, we took it on the chin because we took over Parks and Rec operation, had no revenue come in, and so we basically subsidized it. You know, you look at the deferred maintenance out there, and I don't know, you know, if considering more things out there, but I know the splash pad, the pavilion, even the parking in the road, I'd love to see us, you know, eventually be able to do something with lighting even on the, on that road. But I, you won't get any complaint from me of spending it on the park, but...
We also have Fire, the Fire Station Number One, we're working towards figuring out how that's going to come together, and anything left over could go towards Fire Station Number One as well. There's so many opportunities between Parks and Recreation, our facilities, I could, we could easily spend this money without a problem. We just have to figure out what our priorities are and try to take care of those, which ones are going to have the most impact that will save us from general fund expenditures farther down the road. If I could throw the whole thing on unfunded liabilities, I probably would be pushing to do that, quite frankly. But I can't put any of it on there, so let's spend it wisely, and that may free up some money for us down the road in other areas.
Yes, Mr. Fike?
So, if we approve B under new business, are we giving you the authority to do the $2 million in projects you just mentioned, or are you coming back to us each time?
If, I'm not really asking you to approve it at this time, other than a board consensus that we're moving in the correct direction of where we're going. I don't have to file a report, it has to be in at the end of April. So, my first report is due, and we have to tell them, this is kind of our roadmap of where we're thinking of spending the money. Can always be changed. We can change our minds later down the road, right, you know, until we get into it. Clearly, it's federal funds, so you gotta, you be prepared to be audited, make sure you got it, you know, your I's dotted and your T's crossed, but we can change these. The one question that you're having today is the next item under C with a motion for the Baldwin Road Fire Station to award Spicer Group. I would love to pay for that out of ARPA funds if you guys are agreeable, and so that is going to be kind of part of the, our plan for that next item. It, and we, we really need to get this update done. Our, the men and women of our Fire Department deserve this fix, like, it's for a lot of reasons that I mentioned, but that would be the one I'm going to ask you for tonight if you guys support the direction that we're making the recommendation in, that the next item on your agenda. You don't have to give me a motion tonight on this, but I would love a consensus that it seems like we're going in the right direction, or if you guys have another idea of where you think ARPA funds should be spent, or we should be looking into, we'd love to hear that as well.
I would, number one, I think your three priorities are, they're fine with me, especially, I'd like to do something with the Fire Department and put that up to standard. And the parks, I'm a big proponent of the parks, anyway. Your heating, I don't care about, Melissa's idea.
No, but I think you have... I have your space heater.
No, you, your three priorities would be, I think, would be really good, and I would encourage you maybe, for the next board meeting, maybe to bring those up, and maybe we could get rolling on it to get the fire station going, for certain.
We're going to get the fire station going tonight.
Yep.
The other two, we can probably get the, like, work done on...
This all sounds good to me, too. And I'd like, in the future, though, every time that we approve one of these things, that it clearly says ARPA funds, so that I know, all right, these are coming from the ARPA funds. I know the county does that, you know, in big, bold letters. You know, they're approving all this stuff from their, I know, ARPA funds, and it says, this is what, this is coming from the ARPA funds.
We're going to provide the GL numbers specifically tied to ARPA, because we have to track that money. So, we've got the revenue in a separate account, our expenditure account that we'll have to do a budget amendment for and create a GL number specifically for that line item, that these are what the ARPA funds, these are where the ARPA funds are going. So, we'll make note of that, which general ledger, line item it's coming out of for each one.
Good, good.
Okay. Everybody good with the direction that we're going?
Mm-hmm.
So, I think we got a consensus that we're heading in the right direction on that.
Thank you.
Okay, item C. The board will consider a motion to award the Baldwin Road Fire Station renovation design contract to the Spicer Group of Saginaw, Michigan for 7% of the estimated budget, and authorize the Township Superintendent to negotiate and execute any contracts and related documents. So, Mr. Limina?
Speaking of ARPA funds, Chief Perdatt, why don't you come up to the podium? We have been working on this and, and working through the plan. It really started last year sometime. We did a walkthrough and, and had a drawing done, or rough drawing, to kind of look at our space needs assessment. You know, one of the benefits that we had is that when we did the space needs assessment back in 2017, I think it was, we did take a look at this and talked about what could happen if we were to move forward with this. Who knew that a few years later, that with COVID and everything, it moved us along a little quicker? So, we had an idea, and we've actually gone out for proposals. We've interviewed one of the candidates, really liked it, and as a group, I, you know, and Chief Perdatt can walk you through the rest of it, but we're prepared to make that recommendation to the board for the Spicer Group. Bob?
Sure. Before January 2022, a small group consisting of Supervisor Limina, myself, Deputy Director Boggs, Director Sears, and Deputy Chief Miracle, met together, and we put out a proposal for updating Station Number Two with renovations to allow for the project to accommodate sleeping area for firefighters, a fitness room or a wellness room, as you call it. Also, upgrade the kitchen area so it can be made for food preparation and consumption. Also, separating out the areas of the rest rooms to accommodate for decontamination area when we come back from large fires. The firefighters need to have an area where they take off their dirty turnout gear, have that cleaned and prepped so it goes into a clean storage, and they can also shower away from a clean area where it's not going to have any carcinogens introduced to it. So, with that, we received three bids. On February 11th, we opened the bids up. The Spicer Group came through with a 7% estimated, 7% of the estimated building cost. At this time, it's estimated because the $400,000, we got that estimate way before COVID hit, but now all the increase in costs of the building supplies, we're not too sure what it's going to be, but we're going to hold it right around close to $700,000 or below that if we can. Next one was NSA, which gave us $65,000 bill, if it was a $450,000 estimate, and then the Erschman Group with $65,000 also. So, if you figure it out, Spicer was 7% of the total cost, the others were 14%. Okay?
They also told us that we were probably, it was going to be more, the other two said more in the $850,000 range, but Spicer said $700,000.
Right. So, so this evening, I'm asking to accept the bid from Spicer Group to continue on with the architecture and design of the renovation of Station Number Two.
So, what you'd be approving if you were to do so this evening is, is for the design and engineering phase of these renovations using ARPA funds for the Baldwin Road Fire Station, so just the design and engineering. They will have those right up to the point where we go out for the construction bids, and then that will come back to the board again to, for approval of the construction, actual construction of the building.
So, 7% of $700,000?
Yes.
Is what we're voting on?
Yeah.
So, I'm looking at, you know, the plan, and the exterior, has upgraded the existing LED lighting, paint all exterior doors, outdoor wall lighting packs, site landscaping, remove existing signage, replace entry doors. I don't know if the renovation's going to cause much change to the exterior, but the front of it needs to be updated. I don't know if that's...
Right now, the renovations that are planned is an addition on the side of the building where the vestibule is right now, to remove that and place the sleeping and the wellness area over there, but also exterior upgrading needs to take place, because we want that station to be the pillar of that community.
Yeah. Somehow, if we can freshen up the front of it in the plan, just because it looks...
My ideas could be maybe new garage doors in the front of the station for the apparatus and so on.
It does look very dated.
Yes. It does.
We talked to them about whether it's sandblasting that brick or whatever we have to do to refresh it and make it look like a new facility again.
Okay, so they are going to look at doing something to the front?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay.
Thoughts on the project? When do we estimate that they would start the actual construction, do we think?
Well, the project design says it's going to take about 10 to 12 weeks for them to get the drawings done. We'll have them come back in and do a presentation on what the final drawings would look like, and then construction, they were estimating that would take into 2023, so we're figuring spring, I think it was, that they were projecting.
Okay. Let's see, this, just want to make sure it, okay. Motion by Hugo, supported by Fike. Okay. Ridden? Kilmer?
Yes.
Ms. Hugo?
Yes.
Mr. Fike?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Item D. The board will consider a motion to approve the purchase of a monument sign from Signs by Crane for $17,455.68, and authorize the Township Superintendent to sign and approve all contracts. So, we heard from Mr. Roberts a little bit about our branding, and actually saw, I think it was in the packet as well, and I've seen it numerous places, but anybody have any questions or concerns on, on the signage? Mr. Limina, any thoughts?
I, I think that the branding committee, I mean, this has been going on, and Melissa Roberts has done an excellent job of really working with the sign companies. We went through some changes, you know, we had to get that logo designed first, then we're looking for something that's really going to make a statement out there. And if you look at the one we have, we've been talking about it for years, like Supervisor Bennett had talked about, we're trying to make a statement, and that one makes a statement. I just don't think it's the statement that we want. I think this has been an excellent suggestion. It incorporates, and if you look at, at night, and the branding committee got to see how that pops with the light box, how those letters really stand out. So, when you drive past here, it really, it is going to change the image of who we are. You know, once we get those new rooftop mounts up there, so I have heat again, this place will be a nice place to live, work, and play.
And I think in previous years, we've had quotes that were probably twice that much for signage, so I think it's substantially less than what we've looked at in the past, you know, in terms of cost, so I think it'll be very nice, so. Okay, motion is in order. Okay. Let's see here. Motion by Director Ridden, support by Ms. Hugo. Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Director Ridden?
Yes.
Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay. Moving right along. Item E. The board will consider a motion to approve the proposal from Zito Construction for the repair of a sanitary sewer at 10083 Scenic Ridge Boulevard for the amount of $19,700, and have the Township Superintendent execute all contracts and related documents. Mr. Boggs?
Yes, good evening. So, we were notified by a potential buyer of this home that they had a home inspection, and they, oddly enough, camered the line. I've never heard of a home inspector doing that, but kudos to, to someone doing that. We found a separation in the sanitary sewer on the township-owned side of it. I mean, it's been working for 20 years, but somehow the pipe pulled away from it, maybe when they built the home or something like that. So, I looked at all options, maybe lining it or something like that, that requires, that wouldn't require any excavation, and I just can't do it. It's about 17 feet deep, and if anybody's familiar with the Preserve of Grand Blank off of Baldwin Road there, it, they're very tiny lots, and it's very narrow, so we can't safely dig it, our machine doesn't go that deep, so I need an outside contractor. So, solicited three quotes. Zito was a little bit more, but they're right down the road, and being such a delicate area with traffic control and everything, I think they have the know-how to get it done, and they're right down the road with anything come up where they need more resources, they're right there.
Is this close to Baldwin Road?
It's on Baldwin Road, the preserves, it's the...
No, but I mean, the home that, where this happened?
Yes, it's right off the, the main entrance doorway, so it's probably two houses to the end of the T there, when it goes to the back of the neighborhood, on the western entrance of the...
Lot of water there, too.
Um...
At least at the one end of it, I don't know, by this one, if they're...
No, no, I think that's on the other, other side, that pond. No, this is actually going upgrade, so. The actual sewer is 23 feet deep, but the rise are coming out where it's separated, it's about 16, 17 feet deep, so, but it, there's really no place to dig, it's very tight, and...
Is this the township's responsibility?
Yes, because it's, Township's responsible for the connection all the way to the easement line, or the right away, the six inch, in a six inch by four inch connection. The Township's responsible for the physical portion of the line. Now, maintenance is the homeowner's responsibility. If there's a plug or something like that, the homeowner is responsible because they're putting stuff into the sewer lead. But the structural part of it is our responsibility at the easement line to the main, so...
So, it might reduce a little bit of I and I as well?
Uh, yeah, I mean, 20 years of being separated, I'm sure there's some dirt and groundwater getting into the sewer there.
Pay for, you know, where we will be in the future paying for any water that enters the sanitary sewer system. And so there, we've been discussing that quite a bit at the Water and Sewer Advisory Board. It's called I and I.
Infill and infiltration.
Yep. So, it's basically the water that gets into the sanitary sewer system, either by illegal connections from sump pumps or from...
Groundwater.
Yeah, groundwater.
Add pipes, manholes.
But this would be a perfect example of, it's probably just pouring in.
Yeah. It's not pouring, because if it was poured, it would probably collapse the sewer lead and the ground would have eroded, but there's probably some groundwater getting in there, absolutely. It's probably eroded some over 20 years, so...
Okay. Okay. Mr. Fike makes that motion. Second, Director Ridden. Okay, Ms. Hugo?
Yes.
Treasurer Kilmer?
Yeah.
Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Director Ridden?
Yep.
Myself, yes. Okay. Item F. The board will consider a motion to award Township Mowing Services Contract for 2022 to 2025 to Green Meadows Landscape, and have the Township Superintendent execute all the related contracts and documents. Mr. Boggs?
So, last year, I believe, our previous contractor, Diamond Lawn Care, sold their contracts to Ace Outdoor Services, I couldn't remember the second part of their name, to take over our contract and exercise the remainder of the contract. We noticed in the transition service really downhill, bless you.
Thank you.
Service really went downhill. I mean, just looking at the grounds here, I guess their manpower, I know things have changed in the industry, but we weren't getting a quality product like we were from Diamond, so we exercised determination clause and went out for bids for a new contractor. We went out on the Mitten Network and solicited contractors. Five responded, Ace again, a company called Apex Lawn Care, Atlas Outdoor, Curb Co., and Green Meadows Lawn Scape. Ace was the lowest bidder by far, but just, I mean, they're the reason why we're out here, so we do not want to go down that road anymore. So, we're going to pay a little bit more for Lawn Care. The second lowest bidder was a company called Apex. Um, the second lowest bidder was a company called Apex. Um, the third lowest was Green Metal Lawn, Lawn Scape. Um, Atlas was, uh, next highest and, uh, Curb Co. was the highest. Um, doing some research, uh, between Apex and Green Meadows, um, Apex seems like they're a smaller company, just starting out. They don't have too much commercial accounts. They did, uh, do a little bit for Kettering and it's ma- basically, uh, uh, Kettering owns a lot of empty lots around campus and that's what they're kind of doing. Um, he also does something for a small painter, uh, in Grand Blank Township. But there's not much commercial, uh, uh, real estate there to, to mow. And, uh, the third company did not call me back on the reference. Um, the other company, Green Meadows, they're out of Rochester, but they have municipal experience. They, uh, I first talked to the city of Sterling Heights. They've been with them for three years and glowing recommendation. They're, they're right on spot. Um, I guess their city manager is a real strickler for grass and got on them like once and never had to get on them again. Um, they're, 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 they're pretty top-notch. Uh, they have, uh, city of Sterling Heights has, uh, I've got it right here.
I can't imagine anybody's, uh, better at it than our code enforcement people, but-
Right. Um, uh, let's see here. Um, they do all the right-of-way mowing, city facilities and parks. Uh, they used to do ordinance mowing for, uh, city of Sterling Heights, but they lost to an, another contract. A contractor and code enforcement is a different department down there. Um, um, and then, uh, Waterford Township was the other, uh, reference I heard back from them. Um, they've been with them for three years and the director down, the DPW director down there has no complaints here or a memorandum to everybody. Um, they have, uh, if you've ever been to Waterford Township, they have a large campus. There's a library there. Um, they have nine fire stations, 60 sewer stations, 20 wells. Um, they do their ordinance mo- mowing, uh, uh, several of their parks, soccer fields. They show up Tuesday right on the spot with a plethora of people and knock everything out. Um, no complaints. So, um, they are located off of 59. I did kind of the Google search. Um, um, they are about 38 miles from this office. I did talk to the owner, actually the person who started the company, his son owns the company now, but he had was, uh, had COVID, so I didn't talk to him directly. But they have accounts in Flint, they have accounts in all the way up Gladwin. Um, so I've heard a glowing recommendation, uh, from a couple of municipalities. They also do, uh, Troy Schools and, uh, LaPierce. So, uh, yeah.
Homework on this.
Yes, so, um-
They're going to be able to handle it.
So, yes, there's an $85 difference a week between Apex and Green Meadows. But like I said, I, I want to, I don't want to have to do this again. I want to, you know, do such a good job. This will come for ordinance mowing too. They'll cover all our, um, um, mowings. Yes, so there is an option for expressways. We're discussing on that, but basically on their primary, um, um, mowing, it's about $85 difference between, uh, Apex and Green Meadows. And I think that's the direction-
You can't put Jude's yard in there, so.
So.
Well, thank you very much.
Anybody have any questions?
You've done a thorough job, uh, Mr. Boggs, in researching them and I appreciate it because it is something that, uh, people pay attention to and we use them quite a bit for the ordinance mowing.
Absolutely.
And what that means is basically everybody who calls who says, hey, my neighbor hasn't cut their grass in the past month. Our people are out there and before you know it, we may be cutting it with, with these folks, so.
No, I, I'm, I'm confident and I'm, and like I said, anybody knows me, I, I love my grass like it's my sixth child and, 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 uh, I'm confident that, uh, they'll do a good job for the township, so.
I got one question.
Yes.
How much is this contract for?
Um, so if you break down all the, the township, it's in the packet, uh, I had it right here. Sorry, I turned off the page.
CD2?
Twenty, basically 22.65 a week to mow all of our sewer water stations, township properties, and, uh, the roadside mowing that we do.
And the ordinance mowing?
They'll do-
Pass the bill on to the-
The taxes. But I did not bring that sheet with, I thought I did, but I think I left it on my, uh, desk. But the-
It's in the packet.
Yeah, so I think it was like $90 for the first acre and then I forgot what they charged. It was maybe like 100 and, 120 for the second, uh, anything above that. So, um, it's a little bit more, I think, than we're getting, but we also increased that, uh, ordinance to collect more, so, so.
So you want to make a motion? Okay. Motion by Ms. Hugo, supported by Trustee Fike. Okay, Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Ms. Hugo?
Yes.
Dr. Reridan?
Yes.
Treasure Kilmer?
Yes.
Myself, yes.
Thank you, guys. And gentlemen, or lady, sorry.
And ladies.
Okay, future agenda items, uh, Mr. Leamida?
So I think what we'll see as far as, um, coming at you from a strategic planning, uh, update, uh, in two weeks, we will have, uh, a conversation about OPEB and pension. Um, I've been working on, uh, basically like a, a two-page, uh, kind of, um, historical reference with a timeline for our police department, uh, pension plan. So that, you know, a lot of you guys are new to this and as we're, you know, we've been talking about preparing for negotiations and what we're going to do about legacy costs. Uh, I've actually been sharing it with, uh, all three, uh, police, um, collective bargaining, uh, units. And, uh, we're trying to make sure that we have all the information that we're all agreeing on what the facts were going back to 1993, some of the changes that have been negotiated over the years, some of the contribution rates and how they've changed over the years based on township's, uh, decision to, to make some changes as well as negotiated benefit changes. And I think that will be very helpful from a perspective for the board to kind of look at, you know, from 1993 to now, uh, how we got here. And like I said, uh, we don't blame any of our officers, uh, for the pension and where the legacy costs are. All they did is they came to work for us because we promised them if you come to work for us and you stay here, uh, 25 and out initially, and then we changed that to age 50, uh, in, in 25 years. That we're making you a promise, here's what your pension's going to look like. And now we find ourselves, um, you know, through, uh, changing assumptions, changing marketplace, uh, we all agree that we need to do something. The contribution rate's getting too high, it's getting to where they can't afford it. We still want to use it as recruitment retention tool. We're making great progress, we're working really well. Uh, these guys have been so helpful in providing information, some, some history that I wasn't aware of and I just didn't have any access to. Uh, so I do appreciate the way, uh, the officers have stepped up and provided some information for me as I'm putting this together. I want to be able to present that to you guys in two weeks so we can, uh, start forming the negotiation process of, well, maybe what you would like to accomplish in our negotiations with the three police units this year. Uh, the other thing would be the DPS and fire station. Uh, we have gone out to look for a project manager for the new build on the DPS and hopefully the fire station, as long as we can afford those things moving forward. Um, clearly the costs are coming in, uh, anticipated costs are coming in much higher than we wanted them to be, but we did our space needs assessment and had those conversations back in 2017. Um, COVID certainly impacted, drove the price of steel through the roof, you know? We'll, we'll have to, uh, really take a good look at that. But we, in the meantime, we put the, uh, RFQs out, um, to try to look for a project manager who could lead us through this whole thing. We got some great responses. I think we had six, uh, responses back, but, um, we'll present that information to you as we go through and vet, uh, these different companies, uh, to kind of take a look at how we might move forward with that new, uh, DPS building and, and fire station.
Okay, sounds good. Anything else that anybody wants to see on the agenda coming up? Any topics?
I thought we were going to do something with the contract. Are we waiting?
With?
Mr. Leamida's contract?
Oh, yeah, we're going to go into executive session here in a minute.
Oh, we're going to do that, okay.
Yep.
Sorry.
That's right.
You're not firing me again, are you?
No. The, uh, so, anything else for the future agendas? Okay. Uh, moving on to board reports here real briefly, uh, Ms. Hugo, anything on planning commission?
No, our next meeting is April 7th.
All right. Mr. Fike?
Nothing.
Okay.
I do want to say that Governor Whitmer appointed Chief Wiles to the MCOS, uh, board, which is the credentialing agency for all police officers in the state of Michigan. So.
That's awesome. Speaks very highly of, uh, our police chief and our department, so congratulations, chief. Okay, um. Mr. Kilmer, anything treasure for?
I don't know.
Okay. Um, I've got a couple of things just to hand out real briefly here. I don't want to run too late with our meeting, but, um, this is just a report you guys can take a look at and we'll discuss it at the next meeting. It's, uh, from the road commission. It's just basically an update on what the plans are for, um, this next year in terms of what, uh, expect this summer. So take a look at it and you get to home and we'll, we'll maybe talk about it at the next meeting, so. What else? Attorney Laddie, anything?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Leamida, anything? We're good? Okay, um, I think at this time, uh, I'd like to entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss, uh, what will I call it?
Contract negotiation.
Contract negotiations.
So moved.
Support.
Okay. Mr. Fike?
Yes.
Okay. Treasure Kilmer?
Yeah.
Ms. Hugo?
Yes.
Dr. Reridan?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay. So it's, uh, basically 9:04 and we're, uh, going back into regular session. And, uh, Dr. Reridan?
So I'd like to make a motion that we amend the superintendent's contract to reflect a 3% pay increase as well as, uh, him being allowed to do the retiree, uh, savings, HR, HRA, uh, like all other employees here.
Okay. Is there a support?
Yes.
Okay, support by Treasure Kilmer? Okay. Those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed.
Okay, very good. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make motion.
I'll support.
Those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, guys.